...to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep rolling call members please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Gisenda.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
The motion to approve the minutes of the last meetings, May 3rd and May 23rd.
May 2nd.
2nd.
2nd motion.
Any discussion, any additions, any corrections on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I see.
Question carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period, notice to community.
I'm good. I just came to see what's going on.
All right. Another report from Mr. Tatro, calls enforcement.
Things are pretty quiet building permit wise, waiting for the elementary school to finalize their their plans and the Buddhist vestas removal. Some demo in there, but we're supposed to have a set of plans here in a week or so. So that project's gonna move forward. Guy up on Oak Street with that stone house, he brought the excavator there last fall, but hasn't moved all winter. He told me then it was gonna be down by the end of May. Well, I understand the rainy spring, so I'm gonna have to get after him. We did send a letter out to the guy across from the church there. You know, going down the procedure for an unsafe building, we're waiting for a response. It has to go to Canada, I don't know how long this is gonna take, because we're serving it. So we have to get a response, if he doesn't respond, then there's another procedural step we have to go through before, you know, moving down the road to having an engineer come to look at it and give us a opinion. The grass, well, we talked about the grass, I guess, there's some around, some of the same ones from last year. Mortgage companies, whole lot of these properties, absentee people, they're gone, they just basically left, so I think we're, Village is probably gonna contract out for some of this stuff and put it on the taxes if they don't pay.
Made a few phone calls today and they got a pretty positive response from most of them. They'll take care of it.
The last thing, I gotta bring it up one more time, is we got an application today for a use variance for, it's the former independent products building. Every time this zone, there's three or four commercial places in this area, in that particular zone. And it's a residential zone, and anytime they wanna do anything, it requires a use variance, which makes it very difficult for them to prove a use variance. This place has been sold, there's a new owner, and he has a project in mind for that, and, you know, he filled out, he did the paperwork today, so we're gonna go through it. But I think the Village Board should really look at this particular zone and see if you can modify it from a residential zone to some sort of residential, like commercial, or whatever, where they aren't required to get a use variance every time. They would still have to have special use approval if you do modify it, you still have control. But a use variance basically says you can't do what you wanna do with that property. So to prove that, it's extremely hard. So I thought I'd bring that to your attention again.
What is this for?
Local Street.
Yeah.
The local street.
See, you have, on Locust Street, you have the garage just there, McClair's Garage, you have the independent products. Other side of the bridge, you have where the milk plant is, part of that's in the Village. And then before that, there used to be the old Agway Building, there's a, these are all commercial properties, and anytime they wanna do something, it requires a use variance. And I know there's housing in the area, but I think you could tweak the zoning somewhat in there to allow some of this commercial development, if you want it to develop. If you don't want it to develop, well then, leave it as is, but I kinda think it'd be a nice thing if you could make it easier for these people.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to look at what the requirements are in the procedure and go from there.
Other than that, if anyone has any comments for me?
With the mowing piece too, you know, you're seeing them mow a couple strips across the front and leave everything else. We're not accepting that, right? I mean, they need to do lawn, Champlain Elementary needs to do the property. You know, they've created a field in the back now.
Yeah. He mentioned that, but, I mean, that's up to you, I mean, if you want him to cut it, I can tell him to cut it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I think if we start that, we're just, we're just starting a
Well, the thing is
a landfall of everybody doing that.
Yeah, but on the inside of the tract, you've got a hay field there, so this is, apparently he had somebody that wants it for hay, and that's why they let it go. Now, I mean, it's a lot of lawnmower here to let.
Well, there is a lot of, in the industrial park and other places, some attention needs to be paid to it.
Yeah.
So far, we've got pretty good response, we've been very good about saying the aspect of your
What about the place up here on South Street, up to the Arn Fitz?
Where is that?
170 We talked about Ellis, they've walked out, they just left the house, the house is open, kids are in it. It's filled with mold, it really needs to be
It's under contract.
Is there anything to do for barring up the house too? Apparently, there's a lot of things going on in that house now.
The only thing that we can do is, I mean, if we have no response, I don't know if the Village wants to board that up or not, because then you're gonna assume liability. If it's in the hands of a mortgage company, we can notify them, send them, you know, a notice of violation. But I didn't realize that it was open.
Yeah, it's open.
I think the real estate plan is gonna be down.
Yeah. The estate is down. Yeah, it's the new kid place.
Take a look at that.
Yeah.
Anything else from it? Thank you. Okay, my report. Community garden is up and growing. There's one 10 by 10 foot plot still available, if there is anyone who would like to get involved. I would again, like to thank all those who contributed their time, material, equipment, and resources that made this community action a successful endeavor. I'd like to congratulate Larry, Jimmy, and Terry of PPW successfully completing confined space training on the 7th of June. This is an important safety training, as well as affecting our permanent insurance rating. Congratulations to St. Mary's for a successful bazaar, and their efforts, and the efforts of many in keeping the school up and running. Pretty valuable. This is something that we're looking at in the future here. We are looking for volunteers here in the Village who would be willing to help organize a Village Fest celebration here in the Village around the middle of August. We had a very successful festival here two years ago, that was enjoyed by one and all, and we would like to repeat that experience. Anyone who would like to be part of organizing this event, and have ideas to make this successful, and/or time to help out, please call the Village Office at 298-4152. We, as the Village, will continue to move forward in a positive manner with your ideas, your participation in community events, and the pride you have to make this Village a great place to live and raise our families. Finally, this is a reminder to our senior citizens. This message is for our residents who are enrolled in the EPIC program. Major changes in the program are taking place. To have continual enrollment in EPIC, you must be enrolled in a Medicare Part D planned by January 1st, 2012, with no exceptions. The Clinton County Office for the Aging has scheduled an informational session on Monday, July 11th, from 12:30 to 2:30 PM at Northeastern Clinton Central School High School Cafeteria. If you have any questions, please call the Office for the Aging at 565-4620 for answers, and to enroll in the July 11th session. This is from today's Senior Sentinel Supplement in the Press Republican. It's a very important program, providing prescription drugs for our elderly, one that looks to be very confusing in its nature, in terms of the changes that are taking place. So maybe it is recommended that you call the Office of the Aging and have your questions taken care of. And that's all that I have. Trustee Tremblin.
I attended the zoning board meeting that was held on May 11th, they had two area variances that were approved. Also certificates were given out to various members of the planning board and zoning board who were participating in the training that was offered. Everyone, I believe, from the zoning board attended those trainings. And also, again, congratulations to Larry, Jimmy, and Terry on their completion of confined space training. Just kind of starting to think about what we wanna do for paving for this year. If we wanna tackle maybe some smaller projects, or depending on the CHIPS money, look at maybe waiting and seeing what we wanna do with Church Street. I really, I hate to do Church Street in sections. I'd like to, I would rather not do anything this year, and possibly tackle Church Street next year. But I think we need to get some really good estimates on what we think that road's gonna cost us to do it and do it correctly.
I agree, and I'm really not comfortable with doing half a street.
No.
And with the CHIPS money that we have now going over, and including next year, I think we can do all of Church Street at a, much like we did Elm Street.
And I think that the Village residents would forego a year of not having anything done this year, keeping up with the patching, that the guys have done a great job with that. But I would rather, I would rather skip a year and tackle Church Street next year.
Maintain the potholes, do what we can to keep it serviceable.
Right.
And then do the entire street.
Yeah, that's, that's just my opinion, that's what I would like to shoot for.
That's a good idea.
Can we get an estimate, so we know what we might be shooting at next year?
We can do that.
Is it more than, across, that Elm Street, we did on Elm Street?
It's not that it's more
It's not that long.
I think it's gonna be more extensive.
Yeah, because you've got manholes and water holes, Elm Streets didn't have anything in the center of it. So you have the grind all around then. You're not gonna play on that hill on Elm Street.
I think it's gonna be doing it all at once, and doing the whole street.
When there's such a drop, when you pull into St. Mary's parking lot now, it's terrible.
Minefield.
So if we could start working on some estimates for that, and, you know, give us some leeway for prices of asphalt going up for next year.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to dig it up like we did before, otherwise we eliminate our curbing that we spent all that money on.
Thanks, sir.
Trustee Tremblin.
Just a few notes. I did wanna mention last month's Champlain Fire Department's meeting, Mayor Martin and myself had attended their meeting to bring more emphasis on the requirements of the backflow preventer for their service at that particular station. We did have a follow-up meeting after their regular monthly meeting regarding location of this backflow preventer, and it looks as though they do need to do some additional engineering work before that can be installed. But they're very responsive, they understand why this need and requirement, and how it affects the Village in accounting for water. Overall, it seemed very respective and good response. I did observe last month, the PPW crew was finishing up some topsoil and seeding on Elm Street along the culverts. Looks very nice, that should all, once the grass really takes in, should tighten everything up, a good flow. Another observation I'd made recently was a residence here on Main Street, that's property is a butt to the river. I understand that we've had extremely high water levels on the river and flow. It appears that there's been undermining, that is retaining walls. And I just wasn't aware, it was just fairly new that I have seen this happening. If we have any involvement, or if he's all set, that particular resident, is DEC required, EPA, because he's actually somewhat affecting the river, or trying to repair what is going on?
That's his responsibility. I don't believe the Village, they don't maintain sea walls or edges. Any work he's gonna do there, he'd have to coordinate with the DEC.
And is that something, though, that we'd send a letter to, that he needs to repair, that port falls into the river? Because it is significant.
It would impact his lot, not Village property, so I don't know. I know if it were my lot, I'd probably wanna maintain it, but I don't know, we can go tell them they have to maintain it. That's gonna be expensive.
I guess the one thing I wasn't sure of, or wanted to question, is if there was visible activity just in the Village side of it, should we acknowledge his resident, just to see if they do have required permits or permission from whichever agency that may
If the DEC issues a permit, we'll be notified, we always get copied.
I did also wanna add the local fire department, St. Thomas Champlain, for the scanning work on the lake water. That was mentioned pretty much all around. Quite a tragedy for those landowners, although the dry up, we'll get to it apparently. Community garden looks great, I took a look at it with my wife last week. I see there's a fence up now, keep the little animals out. It's a great location, it's nice, beautiful sunlight for all hours of the day.
Got water readily available.
And I see that there's water available, you don't have to worry about falling into the river. Although the fishing out here is excellent right there right now.
I'll host it a couple times.
That is all I have for this evening.
Perfect. Trustee Tremblin.
Mr. Mayor Martin. Those are all great enough reasons to write that the garden does look good. The only thing I have to report on really is, it's more of a public service announcement. I just wanted to let people know that there will be a flood drive by the CBPH at the Knights of Columbus on July 18th, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So I thought it'd be helpful for folks to get that on their calendar, for any flood donors out there, instead of running to Plattsburgh, we'll have one locally. So again, that's July 18th, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, so please, please come down, donate. Summer months are very important months for the, for the blood bank, they run very short. And that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett.
I'm short for a change too, busy with the bazaar. The bazaar was okay, wasn't as great as last year due to the weather. But we were still able to raise money, a lot of people came out, the community had a really good time. Kids made the best of it, and it kinda became a mud wrestling field. Thanks to Kevin Triller, who came up after the fact, and tried to fill in the massive 10-foot deep ruts that were left from the rides being pulled out of the field. So that was a tremendous help, but you know, everybody has fun with it, and it's good to see everybody come out, the parade was great. So it was good to see. Zumba Thon is continuing through the summer months, so those who have been going, they are already aware of it, but if you've been thinking about joining Zumba Thon, and have not been able to, it will be continuing in the summer months, which is kind of nice, because you're sure everything kind of comes to a total standstill. And the garden does look fabulous as well, I know that a lot of people are excited about it, and we need to get the word out and let people know it's there, and just keep our options open there. And yeah, please, if you have any ideas for the Village Fest, please don't hesitate to call and get your ideas going, so we can have another fun event, the Village event. The town event that they held to benefit St. Mary's was great, and it was a big turnout from the public, just to get out and do stuff, and it's nice to do, we don't do enough community things. It'd be great to do some kind of cover dish thing, and just get the community out. In using the park too, please remember that there is no camping there. I am thrilled to see all the families that are there, using the picnic tables, fishing. I think we've become the hottest spot, because people can get their boats in. So it's great to see, and it's been very, very busy. But please be mindful of the drinking, there is no drinking alcoholic beverages, open container, down in the park. It is a family park, so please be aware of that. That's all.
Thank you. Any reports from the legislature?
Everybody has the May expense revenue report, which is also our year-end report. I think we did very well.
Did very well, considering so many expenses we had over the, over the year. Hopefully, continue moving forward with this resupply. District Labor, David.
We have a few additional invoices to add to the one. The total to be added is $416.10.
A motion to approve the warrant, please.
Somewhat.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you have the address list on your, on your
There's one extra one on there.
Can you board any of the other
I'll take Thomas, you do the fat one. It was just sharp rental.
Oh, which, sharp, the copier rental? To be added to your, to your additional invoices of $1359, so your total was $416.10.
Any other discussion? Keep rolling call members please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Gisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Any comments from the legislature?
Nope. I'll be scheduling our audit, which usually comes the beginning of July, Tom to do the books.
Very good. Tom Troy is on?
Yeah.
No, he's not coming to control.
No, but he does the report that goes to control, yeah.
All right. The report from the superintendent?
He's all have a copy of our work log. We pulled some sidewalks up, just waiting for a stump to get grinded up next to lighteners, four sidewalks up on Buttonup Street, a couple other places. Right now, we're reading water meters, waiting for radio transmitter for the water tank, and we'll be fixing a water leak out here in front this week. Little leak right outside.
Do you want to go in here and connect?
Yeah, I'm waiting for UFO for it.
I knew we haven't
We're gonna get it too. But there's two gas lighters there, so
Yes, I'm very close to the leak, as I recall. Okay, just to let the board know, this receiver that Larry's working on is going to be a very expensive item. Do you want to describe?
It's a transmitter that sends a sonic wave from the water tank to the water plant, tells the level on the tank. And last Thursday, it got hit.
Again?
There was lightning restrictors on it, it's just that because the tank is on the ledge, it just sent it right up through.
There's nothing we can do?
No.
What number is this for replacing?
Second one.
What's the estimate for that?
It's $550 for the transmitter, and it was $600, they come up here and put it in, but I've already put one in, so and the shipping on it, I have it overnighted, so
Can we put like a fake pine tree or something around the corner, so it hits that instead?
I didn't notice that.
Verizon will
Get a Verizon tower, let's call Verizon.
The border patrol did take all their stuff off the top of the tanks, so they had their, they had that rear, that battery with the solar thing, because they're gonna, they won't hook up the electricity system. And that happened right around that time, so I don't know, but it was the reason I would have the lightning. Sometimes it's better almost go up and unplug it, and then plug it right in out there.
Right.
Would you explain to the board?
What's that?
Would you explain to the board what the, what the process is going to be between this tank and the certain
They're coming Friday to clean the tank, they go onto the scuba outfits and vacuum all the tank out and stuff. So I wanna make sure the tank level is low enough, so we can see what's happening, and I'll open the heighten at the top of the hill, and let it bleed out there, so we won't lose any water pressure.
Expect any discoloration?
Yes, you'll, there'll be discoloration, but
That was 17?
It should clear up.
Right, you said?
Yeah.
This makes you talk to mice.
They're gonna stir up the stuff, the tank.
Anything else, Blair?
What other streets are you targeting for sidewalk, are you trying to get this all at one time, one road, or?
In front of the farmer homes, as soon as they fix the wall. Buttonup, Oak Street, we have the internal, we're good with the trees up there.
So you haven't touched Oak yet?
No.
People have bridges. Have there been a lot of people with water pressure issues? No?
I haven't had any calls here.
I know around us, a lot of people were like, I don't know if you ever got a call, I told him to call me.
Oh, yeah, I heard, I had one from Joy and Farrel next to you, but it wasn't in her faucet in the kitchen, it was in her spigot, it was up to the garden holes, and it was got a nice bite. She had good pressure in the sink.
Anything else for Larry? Read the first sentence, please.
Correspondents in Town of Mariah regarding release of Final Essex in Clinton County's water pump plan. Correspondents from American Legion Auxiliary regarding copy, promotion, and response and proclamation from Village. Letters to St. Mary's regarding selling alcohol beverages at the bazaar. Notice to claim from Utica National Insurance regarding accident at 60 Church Street. Letters to Champlain Fire District regarding installation of water meter. Correspondents from Jamie Thomas thanking the Village for helping her during her journalism class. Correspondents from Clinton County Youth Bureau regarding reduction in youth program funding. Letters to Jason O'Connell regarding his property at 93 Church Street. Correspondents from US Census Bureau regarding 2010 census data. Memo from Deputy Clerk Barco regarding sewer credit for Northern Comfort.
Any comments on the first sentence? I noticed that Ms. Thomas wrote a very nice article in Press Republican, you know, the community garden last week, I think she did a great job. Anything else? Full business. TSA meter, nothing there?
Nothing moved yet on that.
We're still waiting. Put it down before the district comes to decide, I think it's contingent upon New York State.
DOT facility.
We need to address the water sewer contract with the Town of Champlain. Need a motion to approve water, wastewater contract with the Town of Champlain.
Somewhat.
Got a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion on it? We've worked on this for quite a while, with representatives from the town, and representatives from the Village. I think it's a fair contract, it is extended over a period of 36 months, and it will be the first contract that we've had in quite a while with the town. We are in discussion, preliminary discussions with the town to, to take over their water and wastewater issues. We have done this in the past, the town decided they wanted to take it over, they took it, and then we are in discussions now with us resuming water and wastewater issues in the town. Monitoring and repairing and running the water and wastewater things with the town. Still preliminary, there are some things that we need to address, Mike and I have talked about some of these. But I think this contract is, is a good contract. But I think this contract is, is a good contract and protects both the village interest and the town interest as well. Do you have any other comments? I'm sure you all went and studied it.
Yeah, with the, the piece on, the guys are going to go and take care of that, the eight hours, is that in addition to what they're already working or is it going to be eight hours less off of what we're paying them?
You mean monitoring and monitoring station now?
Right.
That's over the above.
Okay.
It's 3:30 to 5:00.
I was curious, who's going to save us, or?
Well, it's, it's a benefit to them and to us as well. I mean, we are making sure that the residents on the bridge road, that is proceeding to be coordinated, it needs to, to keep that water safe. I think it was a good deal for the town.
Yes.
And it was a good deal for us.
Just to clarify, I believe they are working for the town though?
Yes, they're working for the town.
Yes, right, yeah, yeah, I understood that. I just didn't know when it said that they were doing that, whether they were blocking out eight hours here and going over there to work, so that would be reduced off our payroll. But it's an additional, that's why I wanted to know.
Just to comment on, on that particular thing, we went through the reclassification of, classifying of that booster station up there before civil service was under the impression we had to have a C license to, to work that plant, it's now a D license. So that, that took most of last week, but civil service and health department to finally get that clarified, so that, that worked out pretty good.
I think we understood that as well. Any other discussions on the contract? Your roll call, please.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Gisanda.
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
And the new business, results of the bid, 2001 pickup truck with plow, we received one bid. And as we sit back and further examine this, I think we looked at this, I think we looked at this rather hastily and I'll take the blame for that one. We need a vehicle to plow in front of our building here, the wastewater plant, water treatment plant. And by expending some money to fix up this, the pickup that we have, I think we will save some money over the next year or two by maintaining it and the bid was not nearly, I don't feel, was nearly worth what the, what the truck and the plow should have gathered or should have garnered. So I guess we need a bid, or we need a motion to deal with this. Let the motion to reject the bid and retain the 2001 Dodge pickup with plow and we will fix it within, maintain it within and keep it running for as long as we can.
Okay, do us part. So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
This is a motion to reject the bid, are we writing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion on this, anything else?
Do you have an estimate on how much we need to put into the vehicle?
Well, we need to put brakes on, we need to do some, some.
Cosmetic.
Cosmetic modifications. Need to fix the driver's side door, we need to fix a hole in the floorboard, I think we can do that by, by pop riveting some metal over it, you know, putting some silicone around it or something to, to keep the elements out. To answer your question, no, I don't have an estimate.
But you said we're going to do this internally, here?
But I think it's all things that we can do here.
Okay.
From that standpoint, I mean, the bids that we received, the bid that we received was not nearly worth the trouble.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of rejecting the bid, maintaining the pickup, this is a five, this is a nine?
Aye.
Any negative response? Motion carries? Need to look at a sewer credit for Northern Comfort. Donna, would you care to explain that, please?
I got my memo, when they had, got their April bill, their bill was extremely high, so I knew someone was going to be calling and Donald Page works there and, well, Larry was involved too, because she talked to Larry first over at the facility and Larry told her. Go ahead, Larry, if you want to explain.
What it was, they had a hole in their liner going out to the fire pond and it would drain out, then the salt would fill it back up, then it would drain out, salt would fill it back up. And apparently one of the meters, they, they had to get sewer credit on it.
Yeah, well, once Larry explained that part of it, she stopped in one day, wanted to review the account because she didn't feel there wasn't any way that there was that much water that was used. So again, we explained, Larry was here, we talked to her again about the whole situation and as we were talking, you know, we mentioned it was the fire pond and I'm not sure who mentioned the sewer part of it, but after checking the paperwork I had printed out, they were being charged sewer, the sewer portion of that, and they should only have been charged water because it does not go into the sewer. So I'm not sure how it happened, if it was set up that way originally. I tried to go back and research old meter readings and it wasn't, the computer won't pull it up, I don't really know why something must have happened, maybe, I, I really don't know what happened. So there wasn't any way I could go back years to find out when or if what happened, so we're basically going with the current stuff of really looks like when it started, which was last June. So that's basically all I did was total up what that meter used and was charged for the sewer portion of it, so.
So to clarify, the, the account number, the V5475, is strictly a water account for the fire pond, it's a separate account?
Correct, correct. And the other account is for the building and that should be water and sewer, which it is. And when the computer merges these two accounts, so it'll print two bills, but the fire pond bill will come up as a zero amount due because it combines the consumption for both of those accounts onto the main, the main account. There may be a way to get around that, I'll have to check with Williams and Law Book to see if, if it matters, if we can do it separately. It's never really been a problem before, we have a few like that, that we do, the school is one, a couple other ones that have two accounts, it'll, it'll do, that's how the computer generates it, but. We may still get a little letter from them saying that they, they still feel that the water is too high, I don't know, haven't, you know, haven't talked to them since, so, but we never received a letter requesting.
The water went through the meter.
You confirmed meters.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. I'm sure it's.
I even took her in the back room to show her the meters, so.
A leak eats a lot of water.
It's a two-inch bite.
How big is this hole?
It's one of the big ponds about behind the building.
I mean, it's a tear in the fabric.
It's a tear in the fabric, yeah.
Nothing.
It drains right out, it's drained right out into the ditch. Comrades were fixing it, but.
Well, they, comrades seem to have told them that they shouldn't lose that much water, that's what she told us. So, you know, she's probably going by what they told her, but.
It's just like the toilet bowl.
Do they still have to pay to repair or contract to repair?
Well, I, not since then, I don't, you know, we haven't heard anymore, the reason they did.
All this slippery meters.
Right. She said they had to keep it running because of the fire part of it.
Fire, because I suggested she shut it off during the day while they were there. She wouldn't do that.
So we need a motion to adjust Northern Comfort Sewer Bill, sum of $4,915.68.
So moved.
Have a second?
Okay.
Any other discussion on this, motion?
We can discuss the hand, sorry about that.
Talking plans, need your roll call, please.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Gisanda.
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Any other new business to come before the board? Motion for return.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is it true that the ladies from the office are in charge of weeding the community garden?
They are the official.
I read that. I read the direction on that. It was made by Press Republican.
Don't worry about it, girls, I got your.
I want to move my garden, in that case.